Good morning. It's Monday, September 24th, 28th, 29th AM. This is the Muscatine County Board of Supervisors. I'd like to call a meeting to order. First is to review the agenda. Move to approve as presented. Motion by Jeff, second by Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Passes. Number three is received comment from the public. Is anyone in the public like to step forward and address the board on anything that's not on the agenda? Seeing no one come forward. We're going number four. Discussion of possible action to approve claims dated September 24th, 2018 in the amount of $768,704.74.
Who'd approve?
Motion by Jeff, second by Nathan. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Number five. Items with county engineer Keith White. Morning Keith.
Good morning.
First up is bid letting on a PCC parking lot paving project at 3610 Park Avenue West. Possible action to accept the bid.
Got, uh... I'm sure we have two bids here. We'll look at them in the order received. First is from Higher Construction from Muscatine, Iowa. We have an Iowa DOT bid bond. And we'll just read totals and then we'll check them out. Uh, we have a total of $349,278.29. Three, four, nine, two, seven, eight, two, nine. And the next is from Branden Construction of Myland, Illinois. And we have a total of $499,650.30. Four, nine, nine, six, five, zero, three, zero. So higher is the red glove. I'll check them out here in a bit and recommend whether or not you'll award the bid.
Very good. With that, uh, any discussion here on these bids, board? Would that project sub in?
Iron City Box Culvert Precast replacing the, uh, little bridge down there. Iowa Bridge is thinking that start setting culvert sections later this week. I did look at the river forecast this morning. It's forecast to come up quite high again later this week. So, hot water might, I'm commenting, might impact that schedule. G28 sub drains, they've mostly been working on the pipeliners. Hope to be done soon and start doing the sub drain tiling. And they're ready to tile if the culvert works delayed remained out. Illawha hot mix resurfacing still is just a point for this year with all the other work they have. The L.L. Pelling Seal Coat contract, they're almost completely done. Their only remaining work was dust control on some of these which is like Veil One-Tenth and Underwood. pavement markings Vogel got complete and has left. It rained on like two or three times so in the west Hubbard area. So we're kind of in an argument with them on that, so. I wouldn't choose to paint just the storm of clouds for gathering, so. They don't see it that way, so. That's an update on that. And then, um, the reclamation in Seal Coat which has been asked, again, they're saying they'll get started later this week. They've got 112 tiny stretch in North Isid and one of, so the steel mill road Moscow to Wilton to do. And they've got the piece immediately south of Durant on Underwood to do. So that's reclaimed, has to set awhile and clear, and then it gets a seal coat. And bridge deck patching which is Dinco, we're scheduled for mid-October. And of course, we have the parking lot flooding today and depending on who gets it and the weather, we'll find out when that might have questions on that.
I'm just wondering, um, to check the Cedar River level at Coonsville yesterday and what it's going to, the projection, I think it's going to be. Working off number 15.
Well, this morning they were like 16.3 was their projection.
Was it 16?
Like five Friday-ish.
Yeah, right at Friday there. And I'm just wondering what that, uh, what that impact could be there on that.
Well, two, two things. The, the last time it was forecast about like that too and it underperformed. I'd say there's greater than a 50% chance that it underperforms. They don't like to tell you it's going to be this high and then it's this high. Uh, and so the impacts, I think, will be very similar to what we saw last time. So we might be going over Akio Cook, might go over Salisbury, definitely go over 152nd. I'm missing somebody in there. But it'll always go 245th going down to Edgewater. That's going to be under, you know, 13 starts putting up, you know.
Sure.
If it's out of the banks an inch, it puts them under. So, that's, that's what I expect. It shouldn't, you know, we've had great luck with G28 when we did the grade raise in there of not having water on or over yet. Barring a really major, so. And that 16.3 falls just short of where they start calling a major level. So, we'll know later in the week what it looks like.
Very good. Anything, uh, anything else?
That's all.
Okay. Is it you? I'm sorry.
Okay, Keith, I just wanted to pass on that issue I raised to you last week. But I'm glad you got a very nice note back from the resident. Thank you, you guys do the processes.
Oh, okay, well, that's good. There are a lot of them out there when it rains like that. That's, that's one we fixed. That would be at least the third time this year. And some of them, lots of them are typically caused by driveways that drain out under the, along the road. But we wouldn't allow under today's standards, so. But I'm glad they got that one.
Thank you.
Cause there's a lot, there's still a lot of them out there. Oh, okay. We haven't got the other yet. I, I wanted to update you on other, uh, you know, we've surveyed, you know, actually three slide sites. And, you know, started to look at them, you know, as engineering designs for repairs or engineering designs for something more. I'm going to tell you at this point, it's my judgment, and we'll just take the one on F-70 just west of North Mulberry. Going down the hill and down in the bottom of the swamp. I think we're going to spend at least a hundred grand to repair that. And I think we probably need to, that's just one as an, that's maybe not the best example. We have two on 180th, one west of 38, one east of 38. The, I think we need to extend the structures. So, we're getting into, you know, more than a hundred thousand, a couple hundred thousand on these things. The one up there on F-70, we probably need to acquire some right away and extend those forest slopes. Or they're just going to slide again. You know, all these things were built back when. The forest slopes are pretty straight up and down. The structures are too short, so. They're probably going to get programmed and maybe done in the next year. And we will do temporaries in the meantime, which really means put some dirt in there and hope it stays until a project happens. But that's, that's where our engineering judgment is at this point.
I wonder, speaking of, um, west of, uh, 38 on 180th, that one has been a problem for decades.
Yes, and...
Simply because the slope is, is too steep in my opinion.
Yes. Uh, all of that. And, you know, there's ways that we can fix that that doesn't make it good, but it's spending. Or we can go extend the structures. That is a smaller box. We can maybe shove a liner through there, but extend it out and flatten the slope in the ditches. We fixed other slides there. And it's probably, you know, time to spend maybe double the money, but have something that we're not going to be in there talking about it again.
Okay, you want to continue to find it, continue to shop.
Yeah. That's what I had on other.
Okay, very good. You're going to do the math on this?
I'll check the numbers and I'll raise my hand.
Okay, very good. Then we'll take some action on that end. Trust? Um, next is, uh, number six. Update on the Muscatine Community Food Pantry relocation with Muscatine Community Food Pantry Board President Nora Dwyer. Nora, good morning.
Hey, how are you guys? Thanks for letting me be part of the, uh, meeting today. And just wanted to give you guys a little bit better timeline of kind of things, how things were going. I know there's been a lot of questions, um, through the last few months about the food pantry and what's going on. And, and certainly appreciate Kathy Anderson Knoll providing some, some, um, input on, and giving you updates regularly on what's happening. But wanted to definitely come in, in from our perspective, let you know what's happening. So, um, first of all, I want to say thank you. I think the county and, um, the food pantry have cooperated for a long time together. And, you know, providing emergency food sacks to many of our residents. And, uh, you know, but kind of being that, um, that safety net when folks need it. So that's been a, a great relationship and we hope to continue that, you know. And that's something that we do is that we provide those emergency food pack, uh, sacks. We pack those for the folks and, and that's part of your budget that, that comes in. And you pay us a certain amount each month and our volunteers put that together. So, that's one item that, um, is something we definitely plan to continue and, and we'll, we'll make sure we do that. Which might, um, need a little bit of space, um, and, you know, trying to figure out how we could make arrangements for that. So I'll, I'll address that in just a moment. The timeline that we have is that, uh, the, uh, a week from Tuesdays, we'll open up an MCSA. Um, we'll be using some of their building. We made arrangements for that. Uh, we're in the process of trying to maneuver and manipulate some things and figure out some storage over there. So, uh, they're willing to work with us as a partner agency, but we've got to figure out a little bit better of what that storage is going to be. And, uh, the timing is perfect. We have the United Way Day of Caring is this Wednesday. And so we've got a couple crews that are volunteering and going to help us move some of those items over. So, uh, we definitely think we would be out of all the, that storage area by the end of October. And if that's acceptable, we, we hope we can work that out. Cause it's a, it's quite a bit of stuff. We've been working on reducing our inventory over the last few months and making sure we get things out to people. Um, and keeping our orders basically to minimum of what we need for supplies. So, um, that's kind of our timeline. So, um, and then, um, like I said, the storage. So, I don't know if you guys realize kind of the mechanics of what happens each month with those emergency food sacks. Is that something you guys know, understand how that works?
The line.
Sort of, or, okay. What, pardon me?
The lightness.
Okay, all right. So, uh, so we pack bags based on the size of the family. A family of one to two, a family of three to four, five to six, seven to eight. And, and then we also provide non-food items. So, folks that are, are in crisis and don't have some of those supplies, there's laundry detergent, um, some personal hygiene items and those sorts of things. And those are provided and the qualifications, that's something that the county services, um, make sure those folks are qualified to receive that. So, you, you pay us a certain amount each month so that you, that, some of that, those food items are paid for, but also the non-food items you pay for that. Provide those to residents. Our volunteers pack those sacks. And then whoever is in charge of the food pantry actually does all the orders for that. So there's a little bit of time involved with that, but we aren't charging you for that time. You know, and that's just something that is in, in keeping with what we're trying to do and what our mission is. So, in order to have that available for the, the, um, county services app is that how it, right now, it's really accessible and really easy for them to come back when they're dealing with a client or a participant, to come back and grab those sacks from them. It's in that hallway towards the back of the loading dock where we are right now. What happens when we move? Um, all that stuff is over somewhere else. So, if it is across the street, does that mean we've got volunteers have to bring it back and forth between the two? Does that, do you see what I'm, kind of where I'm going with this? We, we have a pretty good idea about how many emergency sacks, um, the county uses and, and you guys, they keep track of that. I think it would be nice if we could keep some supply over there, maybe restock it once a month so that then, and when it's 30 degrees below zero outside, we don't have a volunteer with a cart pushing stuff back and forth. So that's something that just, if we could be a little bit flexible or come up with some kind of a plan on how that would work.
How many, how many units is a, is an average inventory in that hallway? And I, I, I've seen this situation before.
Yeah.
But I can't recall in my memory about how many I would see there.
Um, we, we try, we don't overpack the shelves just so, you know, we try to keep it kind of the inventory moving through there, so.
It's about, it's about 12 to 15 sacks that get there.
It's not many.
No, and we distribute, um, I think roughly about 30 sacks a month.
Yeah.
And what our budget, the budgeted amount for that is, it's $500 a month. And what happens is the food pantry orders food, so we're not paying for donated food. We're actually, they bring us a bill, you know, say they've ordered some things from Hy-Vee and they'll bring us a bill. And then we'll pay toward that bill toward the maximum, um, budgeted per year of $2,500. But we, you know, uh, just an example, let's say somebody comes in and they've applied for food stamps and they're not yet eligible, but they're out of food, they need food, they're in crisis, and we're able to give them a food sack based on their family size and based on their eligibility for our general assistance program.
We, we could, we should have a larger supply in that so we could maybe pack it twice a month or something like that.
And we've got a little bit of room back there for the sacks. So it's just a matter of, you know, getting the sacks that the volunteers pack from MCSA over to community services and, you know, how that's, how that's going to happen.
And you want to do that on a monthly basis?
I don't know yet. I'm, I'm just asking, we don't really have a good plan yet.
Okay.
And I just, if we could, I know there's been some, um...
Cause I would think the rotation would be more often than that on how that would...
Well, and we, the way we have them arranged, I, you know, they take it from one end of the shelf before the other, so it's, yeah.
So that's something that if we could at least be, that, that's, I know that from what I understand from the, what's been communicated to, to us is that you want us, want us out of the space for whatever you're planning to use it for. Um, and that's your building and you have the ability to use that for what you feel it's, it's needed for. But I think that's kind of a situation is that how do we, how do we make it, um, efficient? And how do we make it safe rather, and, um, make it so that we can still provide that service and whole collaboration without creating, you know, a, I don't know, four-wheel-drive cart that somebody's got to push over and from one building to the other? So, I just, that's one piece that I'm trying to ask if we could be a little flexible on how that's going to work. Or come up with some kind of plan so that there is at least some items over there so it's not moving a lot of inventory back and forth. Is what I'd like to ask for.
I understand your point, I think, in, in the sense of you just need a small amount of, of parcels that will be distributed out of your office area. Correct?
Yes. And that's, the things that are in the food pantry sacks that we distribute are non-perishables.
Correct. You're correct.
So, um, does that...
But you're asking, you're asking for space to store product there to be able to pack the sacks there?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Oh.
Yes, I am.
I was not clear on that.
That's why I'm trying to be clear is that, yeah.
I was a little behind the curve on that, sorry.
Yeah, that's why, I didn't know if I explained myself. So as, because there is, right now, there's space back in the loading dock where we actually pack those bags. And so some inventory so that we can put the items and pack the bags right there rather than bringing a bunch of inventory over or packing them somewhere else at MCSA or all of that. That's what I'm asking, if, if that's clear.
I'm clear on the, on the, on the, on the process.
Yes.
But I'm not clear in my head exactly what my thought is on this.
Okay.
I'd have to look at this.
Okay, great.
I want to look at this.
Awesome.
Yeah, I, I just think about is, you know, what about a voucher system where you give a voucher and they go to the food pantry and, and you don't... Cause even you coordinating volunteers back and forth, that just sounds like a, kind of a challenge to me. And then, do I have inventory on hand over there or don't I?
Well, I think, I think the, I think the, the issue with the voucher is that we aren't open all the time.
Wow.
And so that's why we've had the food sacks.
Yeah, and so that's, it's been, it's been a fairly easy thing to, to make work. And I'm not saying it can't work. It's just, you know, how much space do we really need and, and all of that? And, and we're willing to work. And, I mean, the, the whole point is to provide people that safety net so that they aren't, if they don't have that and it makes it more difficult, what, what are, what, how are we serving our residents? You know, what are we doing for people and making it so difficult? So, uh, and I think, you know, many people have asked me, you know, what is, what is, what's the intention? You know, what is the space going to be used for? Why are they pushing you out? So, I think that's one question that hasn't been answered. Um, and, um, that's not my, my responsibility to answer. All I'm trying to do is, is meet the request that you all have asked us to do is to find a new location. For whatever reason you don't want us there, um, we're account, trying to, to make that happen. I mean, I've, I've watched your meetings and understand that there's some questions about the food pantry and this whole thing about contamination, which is completely unfounded, but, uh, so...
But I think what's happened over the years is the food pantry, and I think in, in your last update was, it's just growing, growing, growing.
Absolutely.
And it was, it was kind of an afterthought in the first place. I think it's something that was started and kind of in a back-loading dock and, and then it's kind of grown beyond that. And I think that, you know, it's great success for the food pantry, which is great, but it's really not very conducive in that office space. And I think that's the question is, how do we kind of limit the growth and where it is in, in the space allotted to it? Because we, you know, since we did that, we moved, well, we moved a lot of people in, but now we have less people ourselves. So, you know, there are things that have been changing over the time, you know. And I don't, I don't know what the answer, the right answer is.
And I, I, I have to tell you, I think we're, we're really excited, I mean, everybody is, to be, you know, moving over to MCSA and to, you know, create some collaboration. We are going to be moving to Tuesday, Thursday distribution and that that's also the same time that they have some of their health services available. And that, you know, we'll, we'll look at the, there is air conditioning and it is, it is heated in the winter. So I think that'll provide, we're open to that big old door anymore. So I think there are going to be some, some really great things that are going to happen with us moving to that space. So we're going, we're going to really make the best of it. But I think, you know, there are still a few pieces of it that we're trying to work out. And if you can just give us a little flexibility on making sure we, we get it done. It's kind of, I think I mentioned that, it's sort of like moving your house, you know. It's like, there are some things that happen when you move that you're like, oh, I didn't know that's the way it was going to be. And so it might take a little, little extra. One other element that we're trying to work out is how to secure the, the area that we're going to be distributing from and some of that storage. So there, we are looking at some sort of a, maybe a semi-permanent, either door or a wall or some kind of a secure, you know, you've seen those retractable walls kind of thing. So if, so we're looking at some estimates on that and trying, so that would be the only big piece that we're trying to, you know, really figure out how to do that, whether that be secured through, you know, some of the companies in town. I guess Han has different kind of retractable walls that can, can keep that space. The, because we're going to be in that dining room in the basement of MCSA where the area is sort of recessed in there. I'm sorry, I'm talking with my hands and not doing diagrams here, but, so there is a recessed area and we're trying to figure out how to keep, you know, the shelving that will have items on secured so that people can't just, you know, walk in and take stuff. So with that being the case, if any of you have any expertise in installing doors or structures like that, we would, would definitely be interested in your advice on that, so.
As I told my wife when we got married, I do like walls.
There you go.
Maybe. So, can't help you there, but I, you know, when I was over there on Friday, there was just a phenomenal number of people I saw, you know, moving in and out really quickly. It was really impressive. And, you know, I, I think, I'm glad you guys have a, have a dedicated space or something that's going to approach that, that's, is going to help you serve a lot more. And the synergies that you're talking about are very encouraging. And I, for one, think that, you know, you guys are in the same business as we are, which is services, helping people. And I'm sure we can figure out what we need to do to, to make sure that mission gets, that mission gets fulfilled and ease any transitional pains that may have.
That'd be great, that'd be great. Appreciate that.
I'm curious, I'm curious, in regard to square footage that you have now compared to what previously you had with the dock area and so on, do you have compatible square footage?
I don't have the exact numbers, Scott, but the, the measurement, the, the loading dock area where we just do distribution is almost the exact same space as that recessed dining room over at MCSA. So that doesn't account for walkways in and out and all of that, but we would, it's very similar in space. The thing that we don't have that's similar is a dedicated storage room, like the one we have in the basement. And that's where we have to figure out some of what's, what the storage areas are at MCSA so that we can, A, have similar space available, and second of all, meet the requirements of food storage from Riverbend Food Bank, because there are certain parameters that they require us to do with amount of, you know, how far up the floor it is and some of those kind of things.
Oh, sure.
Yeah. So that's part of why we're just trying to make sure, and hopefully after Wednesday, we'll have a better idea of what that space is going to look like and, and working something out. But it's an old building too, you know, so there's lots of cubbies here and there and, and everywhere. So we're trying to get all that organized, so. Any questions?
Well, I think we're good.
Cool. Alright, well, thank you guys.
Thank you, we appreciate that. Pete, would you like to step in?
Yeah, I checked the math and the numbers are correct, so I would recommend awarding a bid to higher construction of Muscatine.
Second. I got a motion by Nathan. Motion by Nathan, second by, by Jeff. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Just comment, we've had them before, you know, they're local, they're very good, so certainly pleased with their bid.
Very good. Thank you, Pete. Number seven, update with community services director Kathy Anderson Norton. Good morning, Kathy.
Good morning. Alright, so just another review of our financials, and we'll get into a little bit more of that in a bit. Our mental health expenditures for FY19, we are currently at twelve point eight four percent with expenditures so far of two seventeen, four seventy-three for our general assistance budget. We're just a bit over where we'd like to be with expenditures of eighty thousand eight ninety-eight for July and August at seventeen point six seven percent. For mental health, we had seventeen commitments in July. We had thirteen that were mental health, two were dual, and of those seventeen, seven unfortunately were hospitalized out of region, which again adds to our costs with sheriff transport and that. Two were filed in Johnson County and hospitalized at the university. Three went to Waterloo, one went to Mercy in Mason City, one went to Dubuque, and one was able to go to Trinity Rock Island with our agreement with Robert Young over in Trinity in Rock Island. In August, we had fifteen commitments. Twelve were mental health, two dual, one substance. Four were hospitalized out of county. Two went to Mercy in Mason City, two went to Council Bluffs, and four were able to go to Trinity Rock Island. So people are going out of region when there are no available psychiatric beds in the region. And if they're able to go, if Trinity Rock Island has a bed, then they're able to go there first. If not, then they're going to have to unfortunately go wherever a bed can be found. So that's, that's not really where we want to be. So our commitment costs.
Kathy, that we would say that Trinity Rock Island, though it's a nice addition, they don't have capacity either for.
Right, and it, yeah, and it may not be that they don't have beds, but they don't have staff. So it's, you know, they may have a bed, but if they don't have the staff available to take care of the person, then they're going to say that they're not able to accept them. But in the past two months, you know, in July and August, we were able to have five cases go there that would have gone further away, you know. So I think that that's, that program so far has been successful.
It's a help, but it doesn't solve the problem.
It's a help, it's not perfect.
I'm glad you brought up that point of, they may have beds available, but they don't have staff.
Right.
And as I've learned more about this, that staff issue is huge.
Oh, it's, it's huge, yeah.
You can have as many beds as you want, but if you don't have a staff to support it.
Right. And nationwide.
And that, that information, I think, is something that is a little bit skewed because, well, we, we don't have a bed available. Well, that's not necessarily true.
Right, yeah.
It's not a physical bed, a bed is.
It's, it's, a bed is a.
It's a staffed bed.
Staffed bed, exactly. You know, and nationwide, there's a terrible shortage of psychiatrists. You know, we've seen in the past several years, medication management being done more by nurse practitioners. And that's, that's what we have in Muscatine. We have two nurse practitioners working out of sixteen sixteen seater that are able to prescribe psychiatric medications. So by and large, most of your folks prescribing medications are physicians' assistants or psychiatric nurse practitioners, which, you know, that's great. I, you know, a lot of people go to a nurse practitioner for, you know, family care and, and that, and, you know, they do a nice job. They're overseen, physicians' assistants are overseen by a psychiatrist. And just finding psychiatrists, they are few and far between that want to practice and do community-based mental health. They want to do research, you know, they want to work with the worried well. So those are a lot of the challenges that we're facing. In fact, when we were talking about our one-time funding grants for the region, you know, was thrown out there. Maybe we should buy a psychiatrist, you know, it's kind of unjust, but, you know, if, if that could have happened. But that's expensive, it's, it's hard to find people that want to come to the Midwest and practice in the area and just do boots-on-the-ground work. So thank you for bringing that up, Scott. Our next meeting with, my next meeting with the crisis staff from Robert Young is going to be October ninth. And we do have the coordinator, care coordinator in the emergency department here at Trinity Muscatine. And then we have a community-based care coordinator. And if somebody shows up in the emergency department here and with a psychiatric issue, they are followed by, they're given, referrals given to the community-based care coordinator who is to follow up with that person. And they follow up and see, you know, can we make referrals to any programs? What might you be eligible for? What kind of help do you need? I also think since we've had the bridge, prescriber bridge appointments for folks, I'm proud to report that Muscatine has a hundred percent compliance rate with that. So when appointments are scheduled for that emergency bridge appointment, those are for folks that are seen in the hospital or maybe they're coming out of jail, they can't get in to see their prescriber or they don't have one, and they're in desperate need of medication. We, there are twenty-five bridge appointments available through the region. And so the ones that have been scheduled in Muscatine, they've had a hundred percent attendance. And you, you have to think, you know, remember that some of these folks that are in these situations often have a poor record of attending appointments and getting to appointments. So the community-based care coordinator, you know, if they have to get that person to the appointment, they'll do that. So that's been a big help for us. Our telehealth crisis evaluations, you know, and this is in your packet, in the month of July, which is the most recent we've got from Robert Young, we had thirty-two crisis evaluations in the emergency department. And so not all of those would have been hospitalized, but what that telehealth evaluation does is, okay, does this person need to be hospitalized? Or can we set up with an appointment the next day? Or, you know, within the week, can we refer them to community-based appointments? And so, you know, I think we've been a good utilizer of that service, that telehealth evaluation. We've traditionally been a high utilizer of, not a high utilizer, but of the avail, we've utilized that service as it's intended, where some of the other hospitals in the region haven't really fully utilized that service. Another area that we're going to see some, some movement in is in October, the assertive community treatment team. I've spoken with Tanya, the coordinator with ACT, Vera French ACT, and we can go ahead and start giving referrals there. So those are some of our high-needs folks, folks that traditionally haven't engaged in services or been successful with services, things like habilitation, you know, working with groups, maybe like optima choices. You know, they just haven't been open to those services or had good follow-through. And the ACT team has a little different approach. They're a little more assertive with getting people to meet. They might just show up to meet with them rather than, you know, saying, okay, we're going to meet this time. Well, they might track them down. So we're going to start giving some referrals to them as they've expanded in the, in the region, which is good news. Also, Vera French is offering same-day adult and child counseling evaluations. And this is not for medication, but, you know, for a counseling evaluation. If you take, you know, you have to take your ID, your insurance card and that, but you can go to Vera French on certain days of the week and I can send you this information. And they can expect to wait an hour, hour and a half to two and a half hours, but they can be seen that same day for an evaluation. And then from that point, sometimes, you know, putting a, a name on the problem, then you figure out how you're going to get some help for that problem. So.
I'm sorry, that goes live in October?
That goes live now, I think. Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, the ACT team goes live in October.
Okay.
And that was one of the.
The same day, the same day counseling is already up?
It's already up and running. We got some information on that at our last governing board meeting from Rich Whitaker.
Same day access.
Yeah.
Great. Yeah, if you could pass on specifically where folks, because I've got a bunch of people.
Okay, I'll, I'll email you all that information. And then I, I met with Judge Rydel and periodically community services, the judicial branch, Trinity Emergency Department and law enforcement, we've gotten together to meet to discuss items and issues relating to commitments. So I'll be coordinating a meeting with those groups, hopefully in October, possibly November. And so sometimes we just get together and say, you know, this piece of it's not working, what can we do better? Sometimes communication, when you've got that many groups going, communication is key, you know. People get frustrated with the process and you just want to try to make it work better and work more smooth. Alright, so for trust, this is our guardianship conservative, conservator, payee service that we do. We're currently serving two hundred and twenty-nine cases at the end of August, so we're bursting at the seams. And I am working on a business plan to address the trust program and expansion of that trust program. We're currently working on four referrals. Our, my two trust social workers attended a workshop for, with Social Security in September. And then they will also be attending a training on the National Guardianship Standards in October through the Office of Public Decision Making. I've been in, in contact with a gentleman, his name's Brian Majeski, and he's with the Office of Public Decision Making. And they do public guardianships throughout the state. They don't have a lot of capacity to do too many. Mike and I had met with a gentleman a couple years previously, and they've had some staff turnover. In fact, Mr. Majeski is leaving his position and there's a new person that's in place. And I'm going to be reaching out to that person when they get up and running to talk about our program here in Muscatine, how the Office of Public Decision Making maybe can help us and provide some supports to us, how we can maybe help them. And because the program that we run here is pretty unique in the state, and we want to make sure that, you know, as the program grows, we're doing things appropriately and that, you know, there's obviously a big need for the service. The other thing I was recently a part of at the ISAC annual conference, I was part of a committee to arrange a panel of experts dealing with transitions for the elderly with mental health issues. And the need for guardianship is a big need. You know, when folks are not able to make decisions on their own and there's no family or no one else available, then they look to us to become a legal guardian for a person. And, you know, it's, it's a legal issue, it's a competency issue, so there's a lot involved with that. But there's, again, really no funding for that. So that's an issue. And one of the panelists who is with the Attorney General's Office suggested maybe the state should make guardianship a core service. And I think with the region, you know, we would, we would certainly support that. You know, it is a needed service and there's, you know, a lot of times even family members may be reluctant to get involved that way. And of course, then our payee program, you know, sometimes if we are payee for a person, that alleviates that relationship with the family and they can just be the family. We can make sure the rent, you know, the utility bills, you know, that they have medications, that they have food. So, you know, we are looking forward to strengthening our program and, and expanding it as needed. So also with the local community, I attended the Future Ready Iowa Summit just this last Friday that was hosted by the Iowa Business Council and Aligned Impact Muscatine. I'm sure you, you know, when you hear these statistics every day, that employers are having a, a very difficult time filling jobs with qualified applicants. As of Friday, Iowa's unemployment rate was a low of two point five, which is the second lowest in the nation, second only to Hawaii. So a shortage of trained workers. The goal for Iowa, the Governor Reynolds' goal is to have seventy percent of Iowa workforce to have some type of post-high school certification or degree training by 2025. And that's necessary in order to fill those open jobs. So it was a, it was a very good conference, very exciting. You know, we work in Muscatine to do things like increase high school graduation rates, increase the number of, of young people that, you know, go on to some kind of secondary certification. And as you know, you know, about. uh, you know, back thirty years ago, a person could get out of high school, maybe go to one of the local factories and earn a livable wage. One of the problems that we're having across the state are living wages. And here, right here in Muscatine, as I've shared before with the Alice Report, you know, we have about thirty percent of working people that aren't making ends meet because they are not earning a living wage. And part of the reason people are unable to earn a living wage is because they don't have the skills and the training necessary to obtain jobs that pay a living wage. So, you know, that's something also we've been working with. Little, uh, MCO update, um, I spoke with Nathan a little bit. Uh, we, we've had a, a provider locally that was having some difficulty with negotiating, um, an appropriate rate with the MCO. Representative Carlson got involved, Lori got involved, I got involved, and I'm pleased to report that they have actually worked out a temporary plan. You know, they've got a three-month plan in place, and then they'll be, you know, probably looking at things again, but that's enabled the provider that's been providing that service for many years, you know, to those individuals to remain providing that and to get paid for the work that they're doing. Um, regionally, and Lori's going to expand a little bit on the regional information, the governing board approved quarterly payments, uh, to Muscatine County from regional funds of one ninety-two, two oh-two, twenty-five totaling seven sixty-eight oh-nine. The regional management team also, um, uh, attended a workforce incentive training with Misty Johnson from the, uh, Office of Disability Rights. And this explains, uh, on how people can, people on benefits can become employed and still maintain, you know, a lot of their benefits, because that's a lot of fear that people have. Okay, if I go to work, I'm going to lose my insurance, I'm going to lose my benefits, and what happens if my job doesn't work out? And so, there's, there was some very good information, and information that I shared with our local employment providers, um, who were, well, Goodwill was able to attend, but Crossroads was not. So, I've shared that information with Crossroads since they are working on, um, implementing a supported employment program. And I'm pleased to report, I spoke with Kyle Avis, uh, just the other day, and they've hired one job coach, and the job coach is currently in some trainings. So, you know, that was another one of those programs that received one of the regional one-time funding grants. So, they're well on their way to, uh, start providing services which are greatly needed here in Muscatine. Um, okay, flipping over, any questions on mental health? I know I threw a lot of information at you. Good, no questions, I love it. Okay, so general assistance. We talked a little bit about the food pantry, and, you know, again, they're in the process. And, uh, the food sacks that Nora was talking about, um, I think you've all been in the office and you see where we sort, store those. We store about fifteen of them. Uh, we distribute about thirty of them a month, you know, sometimes more, sometimes less. Sometimes folks just need those non-food items, you know, the laundry detergent, the deodorant, the soap. Um, and, you know, we have, uh, some shelves. We could probably store, you know, a few more of the sacks there, you know, to eliminate going back and forth from MCSA once they get moved over. So, again, that'll be something that we can all work on together. And, uh, you know, if we, if we want to look at a voucher system, we can do that. But I, I think that we will be able to maintain that relationship with the food pantry, still get folks what they need. And, you know, we've got that little space, it's not, it's not used for anything else in our office, and it's very handy for us to be able to just say, "Okay, here's a food sack." Sometimes we also use that, you know, if you've got somebody that maybe we're not able to help for whatever reason, or, you know, we're not able to work them in for an appointment for a couple of days, we can give them a food sack, send them on their way, and that's a gesture of goodwill. So, that's been very important, that's been very beneficial for us. Um, MCSA in, uh, July and August, we paid for fifty-three folks in July and twenty-five in August. And if you remember, you know, what we pay for is based on billing. So, some of that, what we paid for in July and August were from June, a couple from May, you know, and as well as July. So, maybe a better figure for you to, um, look at is the number of, um, number of people that we authorized, and these are unduplicated. So, we, we authorized forty-two people to stay at MCSA in July and forty-three in August, and these are unduplicated.
Kathy, is that people or they have children that...
It's both, it's both. And I haven't, I haven't, um, found a good way to break that down, other than, um, I can, I can look and look how much we paid, which will tell me. And MCSA, I'm working with them on them getting me some better statistics, and I think that'll be helping, helpful. Another statistic that I, you know, would like to have, uh, from them is how many people are working. And the way that I'm able to get that, and I did that, a little bit of that for a report last year, uh, you know, I have to go through our system and look to see who's reporting wages, and that's, I can do it, it's a little tedious, um, and I think there's a better way to do it. So, so that's also something that I want to be able to report, um, because we talk a lot about, you know, the folks that we are helping. A lot of, a lot of the people that are staying over there do work. Um, MCSA, you know, is also used, um, you know, for folks that are in a situation, maybe they're having trouble paying their rent, their utilities, they're coming to us for general assistance. Um, and if we look at that situation, one of the things that we look at when we authorize general assistance help is, is the situation sustainable? If the situation is not sustainable, we're not able to help. And what we're going to be offering that family is, I think it's time for you to go to MCSA for a few months, regroup, work with someone over there, develop a plan, that when you find another place to live and are ready to move back out, you're going to be sustainable. And that's, you know, there's so many issues that, uh, people in crisis are facing. They're probably facing mental health issues, substance abuse issues, work issues, you know, going back to this, um, uh, Iowa Ready Workforce Conference attendance. You know, our attendance in schools is, could certainly show some improvement. That's one of the big issues our schools are working with, are, is poor attendance. So, when those kids either graduate or get beyond high school and are looking for work, what's the first thing the employer's going to look at is, what's your attendance? And how many people go to a job, they work hard, but the attendance isn't good, and so they lose their job. And, you know, there's a lot of factors that influence people, um, you know, culturally attending and, you know, "Okay, I'm late to work because I got a flat tire, I'm late to work because my babysitter didn't show up." There's so many issues, and, you know, we all, we've all had those issues, but most of us have had the plans, or, you know, you always have Plan B, you know? So, your babysitter's sick, so you call grandma, or you call, you know, uh, your backup babysitter. Or, you know, your car has a flat tire, and, you know, "Okay, maybe I call AAA." Well, if I'm, you know, if I don't have the income to belong to AAA, I'm not going to call AAA, and I might have to wait for, you know, and I might not even have a spare tire. So, some of the things that, you know, it's the same issues we all have, but it, it's, how do you plan for that? How do you deal with that? And if you, if you ha, don't have the resources to deal with that, how do you teach somebody to have those plans? And, and maybe, what's your Plan B? You know, maybe you take the bus, or maybe you call a friend or, or something and get to work. But getting to work is a priority, getting to school is a priority, and really working to instill, you know, those values in, in families at an early age. And that going to school matters, going to work matters.
I have a question in regard to the, uh, the Muscatine School District now has a program in, in some of their, uh, schools in regard to, uh, all children in certain particular schools have, uh, no-cost breakfast and lunch programs. The, and it's a little premature because we're not very deep into the school year, but have you seen a positive impact at all on your end?
Well, I, you know, I...
I'm, I'm just real curious if, if that's going to carry over, uh, to your side.
Well, I think it will, but I think, again, you hit the nail on the head, it's a bit early to tell with that.
It is early.
And I, I think when you look at the, uh, really big picture, if you get kids to school, you feed them a good breakfast, they're ready to learn. You know, a lot of kids show, teachers will report, kids show up to school, but, you know, they're dealing with all kinds of issues. Maybe they didn't have a good breakfast, maybe, you know, the seven-year-old got the five-year-old ready and out the door, for whatever reason. So, I, I think we will see that. Um, and I think one of the things that that does by providing that to every student, it erases those barriers, you know? Okay, you know, that the kids that go have the breakfast are on the free and reduced lunch, and Johnny over here gets breakfast every day, and then Joey knows, "Yeah, Johnny must be low-income because he gets the free and reduced lunch." So, I think when you take that stigma away and you take, you know, that, um, separation away, you know, and you make it, make it a level playing field for everybody, I think that's really important.
The primary increase in participation in those programs directed, as I understand it, are folks who, um, do normally qualify for free and reduced meals, but for whatever reason are taking advantage of it, whether it's because of paperwork issues or stigma.
Sure, sure.
So, you know, that's, that's, I think, primarily where you see the most capture. But I'll ask the district to, to gather those numbers and take a look at them.
Yeah, and the district is, um, having their annual report card breakfast in October, and I know I've signed up to go, I don't remember the date on that. Is it October 1st?
I believe it is October.
It's a Monday, isn't it?
Sneaking up on us.
Yeah. So, yeah, so that's definitely, definitely something. Um, another good news, bit of good news is, uh, we've received notification, the Emergency Food and Shelter Grant that we, we get every year, it's a federal grant. Um, that amount is ten thousand two hundred and seven dollars, and it will be split between the food pantry, MCSA, and Community Services. We'll be having our meeting, um, for the Emergency Food and Shelter Board. Now, Scott, I believe you'll be there, October 4th.
I believe it's on my calendar.
Okay, great.
Kathy, you should interject for anybody who may be out there listening. It's, the October 9th is the progress breakfast.
Thank you.
Seven-thirty at the, uh, what I call the board office. Uh, the whole community's welcome.
Right. All right. Any other questions before I turn it over to Lori for regional? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next is, uh, quarterly update with the Eastern Iowa Mental Health and Disability Services Region with EI MHDS Region CEO, Lori.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Lori.
I think she got some of your posters.
I'm only half joking.
posters, that's a good idea.
I'm only half joking.
You know we can help you guys.
Who needs help? They go to a bar, right? I mean...
Well, okay, so, tell them what you do.
Well...
I like this, I like this.
The business cards, the little blue business cards, as well as the magnets. I have a stack of them in my purse, and if you can imagine carrying around these magnets of any quantity, you start to develop muscles. But when I go to restaurants, I go into the bathrooms, slap them on the walls of the stalls, they're all metal, and it keeps sees up. Put them on the inside of the bathroom doors. People are there, you know, and if it's a bar, if they're drinking and then suddenly, you know, they have a fight, or they start thinking about their life, you know, maybe they do need to get ahold of a crisis number. The little blue cards I carry around, and I pin them up on bulletin boards in stores. You see, like grocery stores will have a big bulletin board where ads or coupons or kinds of things. So, I post these up. So, um, I'm all over Scott County posting things in bathrooms and restaurants and stores.
And I've got them in my purse, but a few, a few of the places that I've gone to, the stalls haven't been metal, so I haven't been able to put them anywhere.
So, well, thank you for the opportunity. Um, I will make sure I'm not repeating things because Kathy did cover a lot of stuff about the region, but I just wanted to give my quarterly update and make you aware of some things that are happening, um, legislatively and state and how it might impact our region. So, if you remember, we signed a contract with Robert Young back in sixteen, um, to develop and manage our crisis system. Um, we are now in year three, July 1, we signed our contract for year three. So, we already have the twenty-four-hour crisis line, we have mobile crisis in Cedar County, we have telehealth in all seven of our hospitals, we have, um, ED care coordinators and community coordinators, and then there are a couple counties now who have a justice-involved care coordinator, and that individual's doing pre-screenings for the mental health commitment piece. We have some co-occurring care coordinators, and then, as Kathy mentioned, the bridge prescriber appointments. So, um, we've struggled here and there trying to fill positions, but, um, Robert Young and our, um, local providers are working hard to try and find, um, qualified individuals. So, it is making a difference. Year three, with our contract, we're going to be developing peer drop-in centers, and we'll have them in three counties. Muscatine will be one, Scott, and Clinton. Um, the peer support drop-in centers, it's been found, um, that if there's a peer working in a, in a center and somebody comes in in crisis or has had mental health issues long-term, they're more likely to succeed and follow through with care if there is a peer talking to them and coaching them and walking with them through the whole process, because they've lived it. And so, we might find that we have some individuals who might be more, um, compliant with medication with our peer drop-in center, or more compliant with going to appointments. We're also looking to expand mobile crisis to all five counties. Law enforcement will be very excited with us when we get this done. Um, this is going to be a process because we'll have to talk to the nine-one-one dispatch folks, we'll have to meet with law enforcement, um, all of the police chiefs, share that type of thing and talk to them. We want our mobile crisis team to be notified the minute a nine-one-one call goes in. So, if there's a suicide call, they're kicking that out not only to law enforcement, let's say, the Muscatine Police Department, but they're also, um, calling and notifying our, uh, mobile crisis team here in Muscatine. So, they'll both meet at the home, and then the police will make sure that it's a safe area, that there's no guns, knives, that kinds of thing. And then the mobile crisis team can deal with that person. That's what they're trained for, and law enforcement can leave. We want law enforcement chasing our bad guys and catching the criminals, not dealing with somebody in a mental health crisis. It's just not good use of resources. We also will be putting together Crisis Stabilization Residential Services in three counties, Muscatine, Scott, and Clinton. And these will be places, homes in a neighborhood, uh, three, four, five-bed, and an individual can go there, stay up to five days. There'll be a clinician there who will work with them to figure out what it is they need, what's happening in their life, how can it be addressed, hooking them up with a variety of services, contacting Community Services, asking for assistance, brainstorming. Um, but we want to be able to get that person back into their own home so they can become productive again. And, you know, maybe it's a transportation issue, maybe it's an issue with rent, so general assistance could assist, maybe it is they've run out of medications, they've missed appointments, they don't know what to do. Um, it can be as simple as that, or it could be even more complicated. Maybe they do need hospitalization, um, maybe they have never seen a psychiatrist, and we need to get them in and have them evaluated. So, um, these folks will utilize these services quite a bit. We're also going to be doing additional training, um, in CIT, Crisis Intervention Training, First Aid, Mental Health, and Trauma and Form Care. And again, the whole point of all of this is to increase awareness and helping folks in our communities, increasing public safety, and then also increasing access to services. Uh, Kathy talked about ACT teams, so I'm not going to go into too much detail with that, but I will share with you, the ACT team in Scott County, they've only been running since December. But just to give you a, a quick point on how much of an impact they've had, they're currently serving twenty-five people. They had hoped to take on six new members every month, but they're taking it a little bit slower. Um, they've had some challenging individuals, and these are folks who typically don't respond to, to traditional, um, services. But in the six months prior to joining the ACT team, these twenty-three people spent a hundred and seventy-six days in an inpatient bed, psych bed. Since joining ACT, there's only been forty days of inpatient beds. So, that's a huge reduction in hospitalization. Um, we also know that it reduces the instances of incarceration. So, prior to the ACT team, uh, prior to joining ACT, we had two members that spent a considerable amount of time in jail, and since joining, the twenty-three members, none of them have been in jail. So, this is going to save a lot of... So this is going to save a lot of budgets elsewhere and it keeps our communities safe and stable. And the ACT Teams go from everywhere to helping to find housing, helping them apply for disability, helping them apply for Medicaid, food stamps, whatever it is, and working with landlords so they can find a place to live. Legislatively, I, the last time I was here, I talked about House File 2456 and the new services. The access centers, the ACT Teams and the intensive residential service homes. Those continue to be on the horizon, but everything has dramatically slowed. There's going to be a public hearing about the rules. And this took a little different twist than any of us expected. The rules were written, they went before the commission, then they went out for public notice and public comment. They received over 55 documents with public comment on them, questions, concerns, suggestions. So DHS has decided there needs to be a public hearing and the Rules Committee agreed. So everything has slowed down. I'm not sure when the public hearing is going to be, but we'll be watching it closely. These could get delayed even further, which I think is important because we really need to take a look at all of these services and find out, do we truly need them? These came about from the Complex Needs Work Group that was put together two years ago. So, you know, my concern has always been, do we need these services? Are the numbers really there of the complex needs folks and are they needed? We're moving forward with the ACT Team. As Kathy mentioned, we're expanding the ACT Team to all five counties. But the ACT Team can help, you know, some of our high utilizers that we all know and that are touching law enforcement, hospital EDs, our offices, the homeless shelters frequently. The Legislative Interim Committee meets October 5th. This is the committee that's going to look at the fiscal viability of regions and look at fund balances, the funding mechanism, the regional caps, how things are working, the expenditures, what services we have in place and what we don't. If you remember, our cap is 3078. We're one of the lowest. We, there's, I believe, four regions that have a 30-something cap. And with our cap at 3078, we can only generate revenue of 9.2 million. Well, if you remember, our budget for this year is 15 million. So it's very easy to do the math, we're going to be in trouble. We're using fund balance and that was the intent all along when we developed the 19. We needed to spend down fund balance according to Senate File 504 from 2017. But the problem is the state has shifted a lot of services to the region without addressing the funding mechanism. And so sustainability, long-term funding, we need to have that in place before we move forward with any of these big-ticket items from House File 2456. One of the, one of my committees that I serve on, I'm working with several lobbyist groups, including ISAC, and putting together some information to present to the Legislative Interim Committee. And what I've done is created a spreadsheet for each region showing five-year projection, what happens to each region. And then on the back, made a lovely, pretty line graph. I'll let you see this. I'm doing this for all 14 regions. I love spreadsheets, so I've got fun doing this. But it's, it's very interesting to see that, these are worst-case scenarios. If we were to spend every dime, which we won't spend 15 million in 19, that's not going to happen. So that changes our fund balance then. We probably will have a difficult time getting through FY '21. And that is the same with seven other regions. So we need to address the per capita, we need to address the caps. ISAC and the supervisor's affiliate is going forward with the removing the caps, making it 4728, removing the 20 or 25% fund balance requirement that came from Senate File 504. If the legislature can't do either one of those things or both of those things, then they're wanting, they're going to propose that sales tax increase and three-eighths of that go to mental health. I don't know how successful that would be. Last year, there was some discussion about sales tax increase and going to, some of it going to mental health. But when you do sales tax, you run into other issues. You know, the economy, what happens if it goes bad? What happens if the state has budget problems? Will they keep that money? You know, there's, there's a whole gamut of issues with that. Did you have a question?
I'm just thinking about, if I recall correctly, the, the next sales tax increase, I believe the very first three-eighths of a cent goes to the DNR.
Yeah, DNR for, yep, water quality and some other things with DNR. Yep. Yeah.
And I think that's something that maybe most folks have forgotten.
Right, right.
So, yeah, it's, it's going to, to be able to have some help, that pie gets cut up pretty quick.
Yeah, yeah, it does, it really does. You know, and, and the issue is, you know, they, the state needs to figure out how they want this mental health system to be funded. They have changed what is core services, added more to the plates of regions, but none of this is free. And these are costly services because they're 24/7 type services. So there needs to be a change financially and they know that. But it, it'll be a challenge to see if they can pull this off. The other piece that's impacting our regions, and I shared this with our governing board last week, DHS has approached the CEO group about managing the children's system. You know, the children's system has a work group and, you know, they have developed an idea or a plan of what they want in a children's system. And they have seen how well the regions have come together and have implemented services and improved things across the state. So now DHS is pushing the regions to manage this. And actually, Rick Schultz, the Bureau Chief, he stated at the commission meeting last week that the regions were going to take over the children's system. And that's farthest from the truth at this point. We have no idea what the children's system will cost. We know that Medicaid is not paying what they should pay. There's other insurance companies that pay. You know, the school systems need to be involved, the juvenile justice system needs to be involved. So there's lots of issues with the kids' system, but we definitely, as a region, cannot be taking that on. FY '20 budget will be starting up pretty soon. I'm not sure when you start your '20 budget. But Scott County, we are starting our budget system, our budget process, October 19th is our kickoff meeting. And one of my goals as CEO is to meet with each county boards as you start working on the budgets for community services for the mental health and be here to help answer any questions you may have about services, projections that the region might have. So you'll see me a little more during the budget process. And hopefully I can provide some information for you. But I'll be bouncing around all five counties to help with that. You may have seen a billboard. If you've been traveling, we have three billboards up, one at a time in various locations this, this month. It's up in the Jackson County area. And it looks just like the front of this card, has our crisis number on it. But there'll be one, Jackson County has one, Cedar County had one and Muscatine will have one up, up as well.
I think it's going to be north on 61.
Okay.
Like kind of out by the Walmart area.
As you're coming into Muscatine?
Yeah.
Okay. And again, it's, it was a marketing thing that Robert Young had suggested. Another piece of marketing we're going to do is do a mailer of the crisis cards, but they'll be bigger. But they'll go out, 135,000 mailers will be going out. They kind of pulled various zip codes in the rural areas and they're going to be mailing out those next month. So you may or may not get one in your box, but just trying to promote the number and making sure that people realize it's available.
They did an earlier mailing, I believe it was early last spring or late last year. Kind of, I got one, I don't know if anyone else. I think they were more for the rural or smaller child parents outside Muscatine and, and the region. But this will be a second one and a larger one more toward the cities.
So just quickly, I'll give you some statistics. You know, the total evaluations our emergency crisis system has done, and this includes telehealth and face-to-face, in FY '17, there was 2127. So 2,127. In FY '18, there was 3793. So a significant increase. And again, promoting that this is available and getting them access quickly in our EDs is vital. Nobody likes to sit in the ED for a long period of time. And I'm sure all of you have had, have been in the ED at one point in your life and you know how chaotic it can be. Someone with a mental health issue or in crisis, having to wait a long time only increases their anxiety. Crisis calls, in '17, or sorry, in '18, we were at, we're on pace to do 1,344. And last year, we did 789. So we do, we're doing a lot of promotion and public awareness so people know that this is available. And then one of the big pieces we need to be very proud of with our care coordinators, both in the ED and in the community, these people have really cut down the number of people that represent in the EDs. We are at 13% in terms of the number of people showing back up in the ED in crisis within 30 days of helping them. So only 13%. We want that number to be low. It is very low, that is awesome. So our care coordinators are hooking up with individuals, making sure they have their meds, making sure, getting to their appointments and then keeping them stable so they don't come back into our system. You know, not that we don't want to help them, but, you know, it's better to access service through their mental health provider, community mental health center, own doctor, family doctor, whatever it would be. But coming through our crisis system, coming through the ED is expensive, so. Does anybody have any questions for me? Again, lots of information. It can be very overwhelming, I know, so. Keeping busy with legislation coming up and committee meetings coming up. Yeah, working with DHS, Department of Management and the Legislative Interim Committee. We have a good committee, I don't know if you've seen the list of who's all on that. But Gary Carlson is on that, which I was excited to see, Lisa Heddins, Joel Frye, Joe Bulcom, folks, Amanda Reagan, folks who know the mental health system. So I was really happy. So I'm hoping that this committee gets us moving in the right direction and comes up with a permanent funding solution. Because it's really hard to budget, really hard to forecast services. And again, the numbers are just simply numbers and they're going to change. They change every, every month. Some folks come into our system, other folks leave. It's a very fluid budget.
The way it's, the funding setup in the state now, it's just, it's not set up.
No, no. It was, it was a one-time fix and, you know, they know that we have fund balance. You know, when I look back at our region, you know, we received equalization dollars two years in a row, 14 and 15. We received transition funds in '13. We received all this money when we really weren't set up to be a region, we didn't have services up and running. So those created large fund balances. And we're not the only one who has a large fund balance. It's all the way across the state, with the exception of Polk. But, you know, so we needed to invest and we needed to be creative, one way of doing that, lowering levies, increasing expenditures, one-time funding grants did some of that. But, you know, we're moving ahead with crisis services that we had planned in our budget long before this year, so.
Yeah, well, that was the, you know, as I saw in the original process, they didn't address one of the major issues we had in mental health services was the funding.
Right.
It's capped at 95 levy rates, which may, you know, may counties do all kinds. And then they continued to mandate services. So you'd have people doing different things to get the dollars required and so you had a mess.
Right, and they're still doing that today because they mandated several new services from House File 2456. With, without, I mean, our hands are still tied because of our cap. So it's frustrating, you know, at this, it continues to go the same direction. And, you know, we want to develop these services, you know, keeping people safe, stable, happy only makes your communities better.
Lori, we certainly appreciate the job you're doing.
Thank you. And I'm available for questions or, you know, calls. I think you all have my phone number, you can always feel free to give me a call. I'll be sending out information from the Legislative Interim Committee. I plan on being at the meeting on October 5th and listening and taking lots of notes. And you can expect a summary after that meeting from me, so. They know I will be there, I'm sure they're thrilled.
I'm sure they are. Well, thank you for the information.
Sure, thank you for your time.
Appreciate it. Uh, let's see, number nine. Discussion of possible action to approve a new application for a Class A Native Distilled Spirits Liquor License Permit for Lucky Eight Distillery LLC, DBA Lucky Eight Distillery, 1636 North Mulberry Road, Muscatine Island, 52761. Who's going to tell me something about this?
The paperwork's all in order. Eric has, he might, we all explain the whole home occupation part of it. But the sheriff has also signed off on it.
Yeah, this is a little unique. Anytime someone applies for a liquor license, they have to submit as part of their application, proof of compliance with zoning regulations. Typically, we would think of is this commercially zoned district where this application has been sought. This property is not zoned commercial, it's zoned agricultural. However, the scale that is being proposed, I've had multiple conversations with the applicant, the scope, scale, that it's a sole proprietorship, it would fall under the home occupancy provisions. We do have home occupancy, home-based businesses, I know you're familiar with that. Very small-scale businesses that can be operated out of your home by immediate family members and/or the resident. Again, I've, I've talked with the applicant, made, made him very aware that should the business grow to any of the conditions, if he violated any of the conditions of the home occupancy ordinance, that he could be in violation of zoning. But there is nothing that prohibits this type of operation strictly because it requires a liquor license. If he falls within the parameters of home occupancy, he would be in compliance with zoning. Given him a lot of warning that if he is successful and from an economic development standpoint, we do hope that's the case, that he would have to find a full-scale residentially zoned district. But at this time, there's nothing in our home occupancy.
Commercial.
Commercial, yes, yes, sorry.
I have a question right off the bat. How does this differ from a winery per se?
Well, this distillery doesn't grow. We have specific provisions for native wineries and cider mills where they produce the, the actual product onsite and then convert it to, to wine or hard cider. This type of operation doesn't grow or produce any of the ingredients. It's simply, you know, by UPS or FedEx delivery, take the ingredients and doing the distilling process on a very small scale, so.
That's, that's, that's given today, but if it would, would it, if they, you know, have some parterries and then just, if you had some parterries, you produce that, could you make the argument that it's the same?
Well, it's still not a winery, the distilled spirit is, is different than wine. Well, it's still not a winery, the distilled spirit is, is different than wine.
There's a different section of code they've got.
So, you know, if a person had some of their own fruit trees and just, the conversion process was to accommodate or accomplish distilled spirits, as long as it still didn't violate any of the home occupancy um, uh, conditions, it would technically not be in violation of zoning. Um, I just wanted to make the applicant very, very clear that much success or growth, you're likely going to run afoul of those conditions. Um, and he's aware of that. Um, those, those uh, conditions are typically um objecting, objective, um, or, sorry, objectionable noises, dust, vibrations, fumes, smells. So, you know, if it grows very large where it's producing any of those things to the objection of others, it's in violation of the home occupancy. But if something going on in your garage is not producing something that would be considered a nuisance by your neighbors, um, there's nothing that prohibits it. Cannot have any outside employees other than people that permanently reside at the present, at the present residence. Um, number of vehicles associated with a home, a home-based business is limited to eight. That includes customers and um delivery vehicles, so as long as they stay under eight vehicles per day coming and going, they're not in violation um of those, no outside advertising is allowed in the home occupancy businesses. But again, if you're just producing a product, my understanding by liquor laws, the product all has to be sold to the state of Iowa anyway. So this is not something where someone is coming to the premise privately and obtaining the product so we don't, you know, we're being served alcohol, alcohol for consumption on the premise. So um, from the scope that is being proposed to me, I find that there's nothing in our code that violates or that it would, you know, be in violation of home occupancy. Just wanna make it very clear that future success or growth, it very well could. He would have to find an appropriate zone district then, to do that, but.
That means I don't move to approve?
Oh, second.
Okay. I got a motion by Matt. Second by Jeff, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed, motion passes, thank you. Um, number ten, discussion of possible action to approve a renewal application for a Class C beer, Class E liquor license and Sunday sales permit for Rife Oil Company, DBA Stewart Road Fast Break, twenty-four eighteen Stewart Road, Muscatine Island, five two seven six one.
Move to approve, second.
Moved by Matt, second by Jeff, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Uh, number eleven, discussion of possible action to approve the minutes of the September seventeen twenty-eighteen regular meeting.
So move second.
Motion by Jeff, second by Nathan, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Uh, number twelve is correspondence. Nathan, what do you, have any correspondence?
Just the, the note I mentioned before, making the engineering department for quick attention dual washout.
Okay, I had nothing, direct? Nothing, Matt?
I did have a call regarding secondary roads, gravel roads, um, washboarding, uh, the use of slag. And although I probably didn't change the residents' mind or outlook, um, I think I did give them a little bit of a background and, and education on why we do what we do with roads during certain times of the year and uh, why we don't do anything with roads at certain times of the year. So, other than that, I didn't, I didn't have anything.
Okay, how about any committee reports, Matt?
Uh, no, so don't.
Jeff?
Yeah, um, excuse me, on Wednesday the nineteenth, the Wilton Development Board runs. Thursday the twentieth, we have the conference board.
Okay. Um, I had uh, conference board as well on the twentieth, and I also had, uh, on the twentieth, the fair board. And the project that they're deepest into, maybe I'll say currently, is the Heritage Hall project, which is the building where all the uh, dump the sawmill, like the, the single cylinder hit miss engines. A lot of people realize what that is, and they've got some uh, bids coming, I believe, next week on uh, the work to be done there, so they've almost got a project in the works for sure. Uh, that's all I had. Nathan, do you have any committee reports?
I have the conference board, uh, also on Friday, had the uh, meeting Decategorization Board, um, with some budgets. Primary uh, item of interest is that we amended or updated our bylaws and um included potential for members of the local government, the school districts, uh, to join us. It's a lot what we do, pack up children. And so we have some contracts with the school districts, so that would be beneficial. Apparently, a lot of other um, decap boards and other counties do that as well.
Okay, very good. Um, next is receive information from county employees. Do I have any, one that needs to address? Fifteen, items with the administration office. First is discussion of possible action, authorizing the chair to execute the following contracts for the Muscatine County Courthouse, third-floor courthouse renovation project. Number one is Wolf Contracting, Inc. in the amount of five hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. Number two is, I'm gonna turn over this to, to Prado Ragley Eye Studios in the amount of fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and ten dollars. Number three is FSS Incorporated in the amount of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And number four is COP, Inc. in the amount of eighty thousand dollars.
And I, uh, can we move on these, all those in, as more?
Yes, if you like.
I make a motion to accept all those, those were within the, what we saw approved last week and, and within our budget amount, so. But move, move their approval, second.
I got a motion by Jeff, a second by Matt. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, very good. Uh, B is discussion of possible action, authorizing the chair to execute the FY eighteen nineteen federal violence against women's contract between the crime victim assistance division of the Iowa Department of Justice and Muscatine County in the amount of three thousand, seven hundred, forty-one dollars with a one thousand, two hundred and forty-seven dollar match.
Move to approve, second.
Motion by Jeff, second by Matt, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Um, anything else, Nancy?
Just to let you know that, that the deadline, we've hit the deadline for um, applications for the zoning commission vacancy, and we received none. So we will be advertising again, and if you guys know of anybody that you think might be interested in serving them, serving in that role, um, please reach out to them and have them contact Eric or I for some information about how they apply.
And how often does that group meet?
Um, once.
They, they need, once a month if the zoning commission has any case.
If there's, if there's a case before the group.
And on a year.
As needed, basically.
You know, maybe more for re-adoption or comprehensive plan update, something like that. Typically, it's once a month at the last. Sure. The, 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 the specific.
That one is, we can have either, we can have either.
And what's the term?
This term?
It, I, this term, I think, I think the guy was only one year into his term, so I think there's like four years remaining on the term.
Over all their five-year terms?
Yes.
Okay, okay, very good. Hopefully, there's someone listening that has some interest or knows someone that may have interest. Um, is that everything, Nancy?
That's all I had.
Okay, if there's nothing else to come before the board, meeting adjourned.